I'd like to welcome everybody to the City of Gardner Planning Commission Meeting for Monday, August 23rd, 2021. If you haven't signed the signing sheet in the back table, please do that for me. At this time, I call the meeting to order. Everyone stand and pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is starting a roll call on my right.
Commissioner Ham here.
Commissioner Mater here.
Bowden here.
McNeer here.
Commissioner Juneman here.
Commissioner Cooper here.
Okay, we have a quorum of six tonight. Next item is consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda have been distributed to each member of the planning commission for study. These items are considered to be routine and will be enacted upon by one motion with no separate discussion. If separate discussion is desired on an item from either the planning commission or from the floor, that item may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda. We have one item standing approval. The minutes is ready for the meeting on July 26, 2021. Does anyone need this removed from the consent agenda? I accept a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Salute.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner McNeer and a second by Commissioner Mater to accept the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Motion passes. All right, item number one on the regular agenda is rezoning request for Z 2105 located northeast corner of Moonlight and Woodson. Is there a staff introduction?
Just a brief introduction. As noted, this is a rezoning case for the property located at 18085 Moonlight Road. It's currently zoned ag, agricultural district, and the request is for C2 general business district rezoning for approximately 3.82 acres.
All right, thank you. Is the applicant present for a presentation?
Yes.
All right, if you want to come to the podium, name and address, please.
Is it this microphone or is it?
The one right there, sir. Thank you.
Hi.
Hello.
My name's Darson. I'm in Stack Architecture. I'm here representing our team, which includes Amanda, Mo, the developer, and Greg. So, you guys on the screen can see our, this is actually a little bit outdated, but for the extent of the conversation, this is, this is fine. It was mentioned that we, we applied for C2. It was staff recommendation that we seek CO- A zoning, which is actually more applicable to what we're trying to achieve on this particular site, and that actually works for us. We, we accepted that staff recommendation. We're actually going to amend our application to go after CO-A rather than C-2. Ultimately, we'd like to rezone this lot in order to develop it with neighborhood scale developments that might include a Phase One, a gas station, a coffee shop or an ice cream shop, and a liquor store. With future expansions, Phase Two might include a neighborhood grocery store, maybe some retail space, or office space for like a chiropractor or a small kind of medical practice. The, there's a neighborhood directly to the north, which would be buffered by the, by landscape buffer that's required by standard city ordinances. There's a neighborhood to the east. There's actually an existing green buffer there. And, yeah, it's, since we're going after the revised zoning of CO, CO dash, CO dash A, everything that's actually outlined in your packet with, all of the uses that are outlined in your packet would cover the extent of anything that we as a development team would try to achieve there in the future. I'd like to introduce Mo, who would like to talk a little bit about his experience as a developer and what he can bring to the site.
Hi, gentlemen. Hi, guys. My name is Mo, and I have an experience of the retail industry since more than five years. And we currently own the gas station in Cleveland, Missouri, Garden City, Missouri, and also we have 11 grocery stores in the Kansas City area, all named under Seva Lot. So, and we are kind of a small group, and we always try to focus on the neighborhood market to serve the neighbors with the best customer services and the product viability with what we have. So, and, and the Gardner Kansas, and I just want to share a little bit funny story that I came here for just my COVID vaccine dose, and I really like the Gardner Kansas, and I see that there is a lot of potential here for, for the convenience stores and the grocery store business, for the retail industry. And then we're browsing the properties, and then we find out this, this lot. So, and we already, as discussed, as Darson described, the usage of the land is pretty much that we are trying to serve only the neighborhood market needs. So, so that's what it, and this is all about, we have the experience. So, like, whatever is good for the neighbor, we are presenting that thing. So, and if you guys have any questions, please, you're most welcome. Thank you.
Okay, there's no one else from the applicant for the presentations.
All right, good evening. Again, this is item one, Z 2105 rezoning of 18085 Moonlight Road from A to C2. As you can see from the aerials, this is a three-point acre site, currently zoned ag agricultural with one house and a barn located on the site. We kind of have a little bleak view that shows the land to the south, which is the Heartland Plumbing. Just took a couple pictures, one looking north, northeast. This is from the parking, or sorry, northwest. This is looking from the parking lot of Heartland Plumbing onto the site. This is where I was standing across the street, looking northeast. I'm actually on White Drive and Moonlight. As you can see, there's the old house, and you can barely see the barn through some of those trees. And this is actually on the, on the side looking south. Again, the property is zoned ag agricultural district. The general character of the neighborhood includes two and four family homes to the east and south, along with a light industrial building directly to the south, and then single family to the west and north of the site. Staff findings, site is zoned for agricultural, which could raise some concerns with the surrounding residents. With use restrictions and design standards, the change in zoning could allow more compatible development to occur on the property. The rezoning allows for a transition between the industrial zoning to the south and residential that surrounds this subject property. While this property is not consistent with the comprehensive plan, future land use map, with the above mentioned factors, it could be a site for infill development that enhances the neighborhood. Staff recommends that the planning commission consider the, consider and recommend a less intensive zoning district, as the petitioner mentioned, from the then requested C2 general business district for the property located at this, at the 180185 Moonlight. The intent of the C2 district is provided in the land development code as follows. General business district provides retail, service, and employment uses that do not require central location or that are not easily integrated with supporting compatible uses. This district can also be used as limited manner for specific uses that are not easily integrated into the compact pattern of neighborhood or mixed-use centers, but they can contribute to the overall vitality and mix of uses of these areas at strategic locations. Given the development pattern, scale, type, and intensity of the, in the vicinity of this parcel, staff feels that the intensity of the uses allowed on this property should be limited to ensure compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood and adjacent properties. Therefore, the COA, Neighborhood Business District, appears to be a more appropriate district if commercial use is to be allowed at this location. The intent of the COA district for the land development code is provide small-scale retail, service, and employment uses in a compact and walkable format that are well-integrated with residential neighborhoods or other supporting areas. And then per Kansas statutes, Section 12-757B, the planning commission may make a recommendation of a zoning classification of a lesser change than that self-set forth in the notice for this item, as long as there has been a previously established table or publication available to the public addressing what zoning classifications are lesser change. In this case, the content of Section 17.05 zoning districts and the use standards of the LDC meets this requirement for recommending the COA district instead of the C2. Additionally, staff feels that for any future development of this property to be well-integrated with the surrounding residential neighborhoods and other uses, uses, such development be subject to review and approval through the planned development review process as outlined in Section 17.03.040 of the Land Development Code. Suggested motion is as follows.
You don't read it?
No, I'm not going to read that.
All right. Thank you, Bob.
Be back.
All right, we've had a presentation from both, so now I will open the public hearing. Senator from the public would like to speak on this matter, you can come to the podium, state your name and address. No one's approaching the podium, so I accept a motion to close the public hearing.
Salute.
Second.
I have a motion to close the public hearing from Commissioner McNeer and a second from Commissioner Mater. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any against?
Any abstentions?
Motion passed 6-0. The public hearing is closed. All right, we'll start with Commissioner comment. We'll go on this one, person by person.
Okay, so, what I'm concerned about is residential noise. Like, I know that there's green spaces, and you said that we're buffering this. What other mitigation factors are you considering? I, is that bad?
Well, I think at the time, when we get to the point of these, but that is a good question.
Yes, I, I'm, yes, I'm really concerned about that.
Go ahead, David.
With the, with the gas station, gas pumps, you know, what are we looking at? Are we looking at just for no commercial vehicles, like, no trucks? I'm just looking at keeping it small scale so that we're not inundating the surrounding homes with traffic and noise. That's my main concern with looking at this.
So Commissioner Ham, I'm going to step in a little bit here, and I think Commissioner Mater was, was telling you the same thing. Those are, those are good comments. We're going to want to take a record of these comments. So all the commissioners, if you have concerns about what's been shown and things like that, and how this integrates, this is the time to make those comments, because the next step in this process, if you go with the suggested motion, there is a condition that they will have to submit a approvable, if you will, development plan for this. So it'll have to come back to us for the development plan.
Okay.
The question tonight that's really before you is the rezoning question only, so it's a land use question at this point in time.
Okay.
Part of the reason we get these kinds of requests for just the zoning is because to really do all the preliminary plan work and final plan work is quite expensive. So when we're in a situation that is sensitive, like this one is, where you're thinking about commercial zoning and how it fits with residential areas, many times the applicant as well as staff is looking for guidance. One, are you comfortable with the rezoning itself as a land use rezoning? Then the second question, if that goes through and is approved, is the condition of getting us a plan. And at that point, if the plan is still not acceptable, the rezoning would not really happen. You'd have that CO, COA district because it's approved, but you have to have that second step, which is an approved plan, which will get into some of your questions about green space allocation, types of uses, those kinds of things, and how they fit in that area. So they will be required if you approve of the motion that's suggested. Condition number two requires them to come back with that development plan process. They will have to have a public hearing again, and then their site plan, their detailed site plans and development plans will be under consideration.
Okay.
So tonight, just for the guidance on this, the first condition is that limited uses.
Okay.
Staff is suggesting the lesser intensive district is a recommendation here, and then we have limited the uses that we found acceptable within that zoning district, and that's what the, the list of those uses is for. So, your, your comments are pertinent. They need to be for the record, and that's the guidance for all the commissioners. If you have concerns, this gives the applicant guidance, too, that even though you may be recommending approval of the zoning district, they're going to have to address those types of concerns through the development plan review process. So I hope that helps clarify.
Yes, okay. So, as long as you're aware of my concerns, then I have no further questions.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll echo Commissioner Ham's comments. You know, that obviously this is in the middle of residential. I think it's needed, but I think it needs to be done right, and I do appreciate the lesser intense use of the zone for the request.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner McNeer?
No questions.
Commissioner Juneman?
The applicant mentioned that the picture on the slideshow for the site, yeah, I know the site layout will change with the final development, but what were you going to say was, was going to change from just the, what was in the slideshow, if I can ask that?
Do you want to show them here?
Sure.
Yeah, pass, maybe pass that around. That, I can hold up. Yeah, that's probably the most recent. Yeah, this, this, it's very similar. So, this is, as Dave mentioned, as we submit the development plan, things will change, as they ultimately do. This is sort of first blush of what the ideas behind this development are, and this is sort of an exercise for us to sort of realize, is the proposed zoning adequate for what we would ultimately try to achieve on the site? And it is. This site is not really large enough to develop anything really big on it, and that might kind of appease some of your concerns as well. The gas station question is actually a very small gas station as far as, when you look at some of the recent gas stations that are being built, and the CO- A zoning allows for a gas station with up to four pumps as a permitted use, and a conditional use allows larger than that. In our particular case, it might be like a five pump gas station at most. So those are some of the changes that are represented on these boards, why not have been picked up on the slide. Some of the other changes are to do with some of the buffering, just the recarrecting on the sides, where you might notice that in this corner, we're incorporating kind of a small green space. We're envisioning that this retail space or the space might be a future restaurant or some sort of, some sort of space that we have in service with adjacent, outdoor eating space, empty space adjacent to it. Those are some of the, some of the issues we're trying to get around with, where there's bike trucks and things concerned with one, sound, two, just proximity to the specific, the houses in the corner. And so those are just a couple of the small things that changed, but as Dave mentioned, as we develop the final development plan, even more things will adjust in there.
No, no questions. Commissioner Cooper?
I, I have a comment, and that is that one of the things that I hate to see in the community is clear cutting and concrete slapped with no, no real green space. So again, that's my concern.
Go ahead. Okay. As for myself, fine with the project. Typically for me, going more intensive zoning than one level next to R1 usually requires some type of plan. Cities taking care of that by doing recommendation number two, so I appreciate the city getting that in there. Because without that in there, I typically will not approve zoning that's more intense, like this next to R1, even though no one from the neighborhood came. So, I do appreciate that, but it looks like a good project business. And that's all I have.
Mr. Chairman, and I'll just reflect from the staff standpoint. We, we have had discussions with the applicant, and we'll have some more prior to their submittal of their preliminary plan, but we recognize the sensitivity of this, and so the comments about green space, the comments about noise and other factors are going to certainly enter into our evaluation. That's why you notice in the list of uses that we're limiting this to, much of it is based on the size of the uses and things. As was noted, this is a relatively small property. You are going to be adjacent to some houses, and so the buffering and things that have to occur in there, we're going to be looking at closely there. So, I can reiterate for you, the next step in this process will be part of that, sitting down with the applicant and going through some of those concerns, and making sure we've got a concept that is at least presentable and hopefully approvable in the future.
Okay, thank you. All right, any further questions? All right, I'd accept the motion.
I'll make that motion, Commissioner, Chairman, Commissioner. After a review of applications Z-21-05, a rezoning for 18085 Moonlight Road, and the staff report, revised staff report dated August 23rd, 2021, the planning commission recommends resuming such parcel from A agricultural district to COA neighborhood, neighborhood business district with the finding that the COA neighborhood business district is a lesser change than the C2 general district, general business district request, as demonstrated by Table 5-2, Use Table Section 17.05, zoning districts and use standards of the Gardner Land Development Code, provided the following conditions are met, items one and two in the revised staff report, and forwards the recommendation for approval to the governing body.
Have a second?
Second.
I have a Commissioner, a motion from Commissioner Mater, and a second from Commissioner McNeer. Any further discussion on the motion? All right, all those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any against? Any abstentions? Motion passes 6-0. All right, item number two, Final Development Plan, FDP 1903, revision deviation request for Phase One, Building 5, 10 Tall Grass Apartments. Do you have an intro for that?
Just very briefly, this item is a revised final development plan. As noted, it's very similar to last month's consideration. If you remember the Treadway apartment proposal in that it's addressing just one item, and this has to do with the width of sidewalks and primarily the widths that occur between parking areas and buildings themselves. With that, we'll allow the applicant to address this item if you desire, and staff does have a brief presentation on it. So, that's the only thing that they were considering as part of the change to the final plan.
Okay, is the applicant here for a presentation?
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission. My name's Todd Blakely. I'm here representing the Tall Grass Apartments. We appreciate your consideration of our request. We have poured now eight-foot sidewalks in front of four of our 10 buildings and have come to realize that's a lot of concrete, and we don't think it looks very good. We don't think it's necessary. The six-foot sidewalk will more than adequately provide for the clear space that's required for ADA, and I think our money is better spent by taking what we save in the reduction of the sidewalk width and applying that towards building wider walking trails through the project. So really, it's, in our eyes, it's a trade-off. It's a better application of funds, and you still end up with a wide enough sidewalk to meet ADA consideration. So, I'm also here, or I'm here tonight with Todd Allenbrand, with Paint and Brockway Civil Engineers, and if you have any technical questions, I know he's anxious to answer those for you. So, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Does the city have a presentation?
For this one, we really don't have a formal presentation, but just wanted to go over the deviation request that they were asking for. Again, it's, the deviation request is from Section 17.06010C of the Land Development Code that outlines development standards for planned zoning districts. It states the development standards for planned zoning shall be those of the most comparable base zoning district, except as specifically modified and noted on development plan accompanying a planned zoning proposal. Departures from the standard may specifically propose standards that differ from the code, street types, open and civic spaces, applicable uses form standard, building types, and furnished types. So, just to name a few. The, the specific section of, that they're requesting the deviation from is 17.09.020C2, access and parking standards, sidewalks. Standards are internal sidewalk widths along any parking with vehicle overhang shall be eight feet, and their proposed sidewalk widths along Buildings 5 through 10, they want to go to six feet. The applicant, the request is allow, from the applicant's response, the request to allow a reduction of the width of sidewalks that parallel their parking lots in front of the buildings from eight to, of course, to six. ADA compliance, six-foot wide sidewalks allow for vehicle encroachment and still provide an approximate four-feet clear path. And I'll, when I read my staff recommendation, you'll see why we're, we're going to go with what we presented. The requirement, according to their engineer, the minimum clear path is 3.5 feet. They feel that the narrow walks are more aesthetically pleasing and provide additional lawn depth along the fronts of those buildings. Staff comments on this deviation request, the sidewalks in front of the above-mentioned buildings have already been poured. The applicant's engineer will need to provide the city with a written confirmation that the decrease in width of the sidewalk meet all ADA requirements. The, excuse me. The applicant has also proposed to increase the width of internal trails from five feet to eight feet. So the staff recommends approval of the deviation. And our recommended, recommendation, staff recommends approval of the revised final development plan for Tall Grass, first phase, subject to the conditions outlined in your staff reports. Basically, the applicant's engineer shall provide written proof of ADA compliance, and that all internal trails be widened from five feet to eight feet. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'll open this up for general discussion if anybody has anything they'd like to say.
Okay, going based off of what we were talking about last month with the ADA compliance, and I know they're saying here the required minimum clear path is 3.5 feet, and we were talking about overhangs of more, newer cars have less overhang on sidewalks. Is there accommodation to make sure that if someone is driving an older car with a greater overhang on the sidewalk, that it is still ADA compliant? Can we ensure that to make sure that if someone pulls up too close, that it is still ADA compliant, because that 3.5 feet seems very restrictive? I, I'm pleased with the, you know, widening of the, the walking trails to the eight feet, but I want to make sure that if we're dealing with cars that pull too far forward, that we're not falling within a standard where we're outside of ADA compliance, and then we're setting this precedent of, you know, limiting the standards on sidewalks, and then we get ourselves into a limiting the standards on sidewalks, and then we get ourselves into a bind where now we've okayed this with, you know, three-point-five feet, and we're not meeting compliance.
So, we cannot really guarantee that how a person pulls their vehicle into the parking space and so on and so forth. But what I can tell you is, last month when we were doing our research on the ADA stuff and looking at that as applied to treadway, what we found in most ordinances and in most of the guidance that we were looking at, both from ITU, which is the Transportation Handbook, Transportation Engineering Handbook, that typically what you're trying to do is plan for anywhere from two feet to two-and-a-half feet of overhang of the vehicles. So, with the six-foot that's being requested here, you would have the three-and-a-half being free and clear, and maximum two-and-a-half of that guidance. So, while we can't necessarily even predict what vehicles are going to do or how people are going to park, and you know that that happens all the time, what we can say is that based on what we found in our research, the six-foot would accommodate that two-to-two-and-a-half foot overhang. That seems to be typical in most other ordinances and other communities, and seems to be acceptable, and still maintain the three-and-a-half foot free and clear. Now, understand that three-and-a-half foot free and clear in that area also requires those kind of pullouts every two-hundred feet and things like that. What helps this is, again, those areas where the walkouts are coming from the building are spaced such that they do have that accommodation more frequent than every two-hundred feet. I believe that's correct.
Right.
So, when you look at the entries of the buildings, they're also getting that. So, I don't want people to get confused with a five-foot sidewalk width, which is what we typically require straight up. But in this situation, because of the pullouts, they're allowed to go under, I believe it's to go under the four-foot that ADA has in there. So, that's what's allowing them to get to the three-and-a-half.
Okay.
Does that make sense for everybody? It's kind of convoluted when you start talking about all of the different numbers.
Yes, it is. It is. But we're, so, there's not a chance of that happening with the way it's written right now, is what I want to make sure. There's not a chance that we would go under that, that the sidewalk would go under that?
No.
Okay.
No. Because what we're going to do, again, this has to be in ADA compliance, and that's one of the reasons why condition one is being placed on here, is to make sure that the ADA compliance people, that either the engineers hired or that have on staff, can confirm that all ADA requirements are being met.
Okay.
Because we know that that's, we have to meet that.
Right.
Hi, Todd Allenbrand, Paine Brockway, four-twenty-six South Kansas Avenue, Olathe, Kansas, six-six-zero-six-one. Technically, according to the 2010 ADA requirements, the accessible route or travel path is what they call it, is thirty-six inches. Where the forty-two inches or three-and-a-half feet comes into play is if you have a travel path that has a ninety-degree turn or a hundred-and-eighty-degree turn, they recommend that the width be forty-two inches. So, what we do is we just go ahead and carry that forty-two inches all the way through our routes, even though thirty-six or three-foot is the minimum. And if you guys look at the plan on page three, I show a full-size F-150 four-door with an eight-foot bed. It's approximately twenty-foot, ten inches long. I show the front tires up against the curb, the face of the curb, and the bumper sticking out. And with the bumper sticking out from the back of the sidewalk to the front of the bumper, we have approximately four feet, three inches. So technically, we have fifty-one inches. And as it comes, like Dave was talking about, the passing square is what they call that. That's, if you have a sidewalk that's less than sixty inches, you're required by ADA requirement to go two-hundred-foot intervals with the passing square that's sixty inches wide by sixty inches long. In this case, like he said, with the sidewalks approaching, that approach the building, you know, they range anywhere from, I don't know, eighty feet, you know, ninety-nine feet to thirty feet. So, there's a lot of additional areas where they can scoot over or get over. And I also showed that same scenario parked, a truck parked right in front of that, and the space from the bumper to that, into that space, they have like about, around six-foot, two inches of clearance to make a turn. And people get it confused, just, I'm not trying to go on about it, but what a lot of people get confused about ADA paths, if you're in a situation where you have a landing, a ramp and a landing, according to ADA, the ramps, the landings have to be five-foot. So, a lot of people get confused about the ADA path being five-foot. And the reason on landings and ramps and landings that are five-foot is to give the person in a wheelchair or with a cane the opportunity to have a larger space to slow down and make a maneuver. And those only apply the five-foot, sixty-by, five-by-five squares only apply in paths where a ramp is introduced and where they're making a turning movement. And so hopefully that kind of clears some of it up.
And just to clarify, I believe that all of the entry walkways from where this sidewalk would be to the entries of the buildings are all five-foot wide, if I remember right.
Eight.
Eight-foot.
Yeah. And they're leaving them eight, unless they change them wider in the field, which I'm, they might potentially be doing that. I'm not a hundred percent sure. Thank you.
I have a couple of comments.
Go ahead.
Chairman, thank you. Commissioners, who all went out to the site and took pictures and checked out the work?
I did, but I did not take great.
Okay. Well, for those that didn't, it looks like there was sidewalk poured, and then it looks like there was an add-on. Right? Looks like normal sidewalk, and then you have an add-on. And that's not even to the point of what was approved the first time. So, are we going to get ourselves into an issue of we have, we have development happening, and there's no checks and balances, and then we have this after the fact, and it's only happened in front of, I believe, four buildings? There's no other sidewalks that I could see if I was counting the buildings right. So, what we have is code, is what was expected to be built to code, and it wasn't.
So, I'm going to have the applicant address that, because I do know that there was some add-on work that was done, and I don't know if it was all four buildings. I don't know. Again, they were looking at different parts of the project itself. So, there was the buildings one through four area, which I know had been poured already at one point. And then I know there was discussion about how to handle five through ten, and then I know there was discussion that there might have been some add-on work that was being done to the one through four. So, I'm going to let you address all of that.
Sure.
Otherwise, I'll misstate it. I don't want to misrepresent the applicant.
Thank you.
It's nothing more than human error. Our contractor poured a five-foot walk, and one of his plans showed eight. He got it confused with another plan that shows some five-foot walks that were approved in the plan. Our superintendent picked that up, said you've got to widen it to eight feet. So, we did that. But this all came at about the same time that we wanted to approach the city anyway about the eight-foot wide sidewalks, to see if we couldn't reduce those to six, still meet the ADA requirements, and take that additional money that we'd spent on those wider sidewalks and apply those to a walking trail. So, we weren't trying to get away with anything. And I wish we had poured the eight-foot from the beginning, because it is, it's a lot more difficult to come back after the fact and add on three feet. But in front of those first four buildings, you have an eight-foot sidewalk. So, but that was nothing more than contractor error.
Understood. We're all, we're all humans. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That's really all I had to address. It doesn't look very appealing, and if these are supposed to be upper-end units, that's how, I mean, I just, I would like for it to be noted for the record that we have a process. We have a land development code. We had plans that followed the code. And human error, right? No one's perfect. It happened. But hopefully for the record, it will be noted that when plans come forward, they come forward rote clearly, and that's the record, the plan that will be followed. That's all I have. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone have any comments they'd like to add?
Hi.
Okay, Commissioner.
The engineer mentioned looking at the pickups pulled up to the front of the curb. I know pickups usually park backwards into parallel spots, or not parallel, into perpendicular spots especially. Did you look at that scenario to see what the overhang was with trucks?
Todd Allenbrand, four-twenty-six South Kansas Avenue, Olathe, Kansas. We didn't need to look at it, because I think everybody will realize that it doesn't, if a pickup pulls in backwards, it doesn't matter if you would have had an eight-foot sidewalk, it still would have impeded the traffic, or the travel way or the accessible route. Those are just, you know, an issue with pickups. I mean, the bed sticks back there four feet behind the rear wheels, depending on the pickup bed, and another ten inches for the bumper. And then, you know, unfortunately, if they have a ball on the end and you hit your shin on it, you know, it's not nice. But I think in a sense, for an apartment complex, whether it's this one or any apartment complex, I would hope that the managers at the complex would make the owner of a pickup aware that they need to pull forward and correct that problem. Because, I mean, you're going to have it everywhere, no matter where you're at, for the most part.
Do you have anything else?
No, that's it. Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, just a couple of thoughts. First off, to the idea of maybe pickups that are back in, you know, parking spots like that, maybe that could be handled very simply with a few head-in-only parking signs spread out through the development. That might be able to be a simple and easy way to eliminate that. I understand, you know, plans getting mixed up, or, you know, something not being poured right, or something like that. I don't believe that anything nefarious was going on there. I would say that I was pretty impressed with the way that the developer and the city worked together to come up with a process that will ensure ADA compliance, as well as getting a pretty significant improvement to the walking trails in the development. So, I think that was a very good piece of work of the city and the developer working together. I've just been impressed with what I've seen and heard tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I support it. I will say that we've had two developers' apartments now come to us on the eight-foot sidewalks. We allowed a deviation on one. We'll have to see about this one. So, and I believe, David, when you were looking, a lot of the cities have six-foot. Is that what you're saying?
Well, there's a number of things we did find. I believe it's, so again, understand the development review process when we have these plans from what the standard is. What we did find in a number of cities was seven-foot. There were numbers that were smaller than what we have as eight-foot. There were a number that also had six-foot. There were instances where some of the cities through the development plan reduced to six feet, you know, kind of what we've talked about. So, I don't want to put too much weight and emphasis on it, because those are different communities, and they have different standards and values when they're looking at different projects. But last month when we were doing that research and we were looking at it, that seven-foot number and the six-foot number were coming up pretty repetitively from that standpoint. We may want to revisit this at some point in time when we look at our regulations again, to either reassure, is it really the eight-foot that we want? How do we want to value that in the future? I will tell you, we may run into this more with more apartment complexes as we go on. If you remember last month, part of their issue was not just the parking interface, but it was also the fire distance between the buildings to where the fire trucks would be and the competition that was going on in that front area. That was not the case in this particular issue. But as we start looking at all the functions we're trying to fit into some of these places, we may want to revisit which things do we value the most. That'll give me guidance in future cases as to whether we try to retain that eight-foot sidewalk and reduce some of the landscaping, or how we deal with that space. So, I don't want to muddy up the issue too much more. But because we've had two of these cases now in two months in a row, I anticipate that we will see this again somewhere in future apartment proposals.
So, you knew exactly where I was going. You know, there's a point, and it's only two at the moment, but from what I've heard over the last two requests, it appears eight-feet might be just a little too much. And instead of having to hear deviations every time an apartment complex comes up, it would probably be better to get it in the standard that's, in my opinion, more aligned with what other videos. So, just my thoughts on it. Does anybody have any other questions? All right, I'd accept the motion.
I'll make that motion. After review of application FDP dash one-nine dash zero-three, a revised final development plan for Tallgrass first plat dated August sixth, two thousand twenty-one, and staff report dated August twenty-three, two thousand twenty-one, the Planning Commission approves the application as proposed, provided the following conditions are met. Number one, the applicant's engineer shall provide written proof of ADA compliance for all sidewalks alongside buildings that front parking lots. Number two, internal trails shall be widened from five feet to eight feet.
Good, thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, I'll give the second to Commissioner Cooper. So, I have a motion by Commissioner McNear, a second by Commissioner Cooper. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any against?
Against. No.
Any extensions? Motion passes five to one.
And before we go to discussion items, I will mention too, the other aspect that we'll want to look at on these widths is when we start talking about these internal trails. Because our code now currently talks about the internal trails being five feet wide. And from a staff perspective at least, and this is part of the reason you see this recommendation, when you think about trail usage and competing modes of transportation that are on those trails, five feet is not necessarily wide enough. So, we're going to be revisiting this width issue, I think, again, not only for the sidewalks you saw, but also the internal trails. So, just be aware of that.
Okay. We're on to our discussion items. Item number one, utility scale solar facilities. I'm not sure who started.
I'll just briefly, as Sean gets up and he gets his PowerPoint presentation up. Sean Pendley's here from County Planning Staff. The county has been approached by a potential applicant regarding a utility scale solar facility in Johnson County, actually straddling the county line, I would say in Douglas County, too. So, what the county has been working on is drafting some regulations in regard to their zoning regulations, but also comprehensive plan amendments. Tonight, this is purely informational. I know there's discussion out there. There's people who've talked about, oh, I'm hearing about this solar facility. I'm hearing this stuff out in West Gardner. And the term "West Gardner" is getting thrown out there. That is because there's a West Gardner substation, and that's where that name comes from. Doesn't mean it's in the city limits of Gardner. It's just a reference point for that. So, I'm going to let Sean go ahead and give his presentation tonight, and I'm sure he's also available for questions tonight, any comments that you may have. So, I'll turn it over to Sean.
Thank you, Dave. Good evening. I'm Sean Pendley, Deputy Director of Planning for Johnson County. Our offices are in Olathe, one-eleven South Cherry Street. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening regarding this project. As Dave mentioned, this is a new project for the county. As most local jurisdictions currently do not have regulations that would address a use like this. This is very unique and very large-scale. This is not like a simple accessory use that people have within their yard with a solar panel either on the roof or on the ground mounted. These are for utility scale, very large, to power the grid and be used for transfer power to the grid. Dave, can I advance these, or do I need to just have these?
You should be able to.
Okay. See if I can move this here, just to the side. Okay. All right, thank you. So, as Dave mentioned, I have a brief presentation I'd like to go through. I'll try to go through these fairly quickly and allow time for questions. There has been a growing demand for renewable energy. As many of you may know, there are some cost benefits to that, also the obvious benefits to the environment for renewable energy. Solar energy is the fastest-growing energy source, and these are for alternatives to traditional coal power. Clearly, solar energy is becoming rapidly popular, and there's many new projects coming through the country. Not as many so far in the Midwest, but we're seeing a great interest in that. As Dave mentioned, we have a prospective utility scale project in the county. Next Era Energy is looking at sites in West Johnson County, west of Gardner and Edgerton, just as a preliminary look at a potential project. So, currently, as I mentioned, the county does not have regulations for these uses. So, we're working fast to get those regulations prepared in anticipation of a project. The solar facilities are very unique, have very unique characteristics and impacts to the county and local jurisdictions. So, we really needed to address these in our regulations. Very large-scale, potentially upwards of thousands of acres, and they have very intense site coverage with these photovoltaic panels, the traditional PV panels. They can cover a large area. They have very large lifespan, could be, a long lifespan, could be anywhere- They have very large lifespan, could be, a long lifespan, could be anywhere up to 40 years potentially, and could be renewed. One of the major impacts and the reason why we wanted to get out and try to address these with some of the local cities, they have potential impacts on future city growth and development. So because they do have such large impacts in the county, they may impact future growth areas for the cities. So we wanted to get in front of that and try to get some comments and feedback from the cities. The county is also very concerned about the rural character for these types of uses, what they could have an impact on the county for open space, aesthetics, impacts to residential, obviously potential impacts on the environment. And there are potential fire hazards for some of the uses. These are very intense uses. They're not just the PV panels, but they also require substations, inverters, generators, a lot of things that are fairly intense, have a lot of code issues that we need to address. Just as a quick update for the process, where we are with this at this time, we have had a few meetings now with the county planning commission and our Board of County Commissioners with study sessions. And most recently, we had the initial draft to our comprehensive plan update and zoning regulations that we presented to the planning commission just last week, or I believe it was just a week and a half ago. And at that time, the planning commission decided we still needed to do additional review and study of this. We were ideally hoping to get this on for a public hearing sometime in September. Planning commission clearly had a lot of concerns and questions, wanted to get impact or feedback, excuse me, from the cities, wanted to have more feedback and understanding what potential impacts there are. So they decided we're going to push this back a little bit, have a couple of study sessions coming up in September. I will point out the next dates for September 14th and September 28th being times for additional input and participation. And we're targeting the meeting on September 28th. That'll be a virtual meeting on Zoom. We're hoping to have involvement from the cities. We're going to be sending out a letter to the cities this week with requesting additional comments and feedback. That's a meeting we're hoping to get participation at the planning commission from the cities. So we hope to get some comments and questions and discussion at that meeting. Hopefully, we'll have a public hearing coming up in October or November, and ideally with the review and adoption by the Board of County Commissioners in December. These are all, of course, tentative, as none of the dates have been set for public hearing yet. So we have had involvement. We, the county has consulted with Berkeley Group. It's a local environmental governmental consulting firm that has expertise in environmental and land use planning. The Berkeley Group has assisted the county staff with adopting some draft regulations, base regulations. The county staff has been adopting or amending those to prepare for the county regulations. So just wanted to point out that we have been consulting with a professional consultant on this as well. So the first step to what we realized we needed to address in our zoning regulations for these types of facilities that have major impacts, there's a lot of development standards that we need to have in preparation for these uses. The first thing we do though is we're looking at the comprehensive plan. We wanted to address the rural character and open spaces. We don't want to have a use that would potentially eliminate a lot of the open space, and we want to maintain that rural character and open space. We also need to accommodate for future growth, city growth and development. So we don't want to impact any future growth areas if there is a proposed development. We want to make sure it's not conflicting with city growth. And of course, again, protecting for future residential development in the county and preserving any parks or historic sites in other environmentally sensitive areas. There are different types of solar facilities. What we're talking about really is going to be utility scale. Small scale is anything less than an acre. Generally, those types of facilities are really probably going to be associated with an actual development. It may be an accessory for an industrial development or could be a residential user. Those types of uses, as we have today, we have regulations for accessory uses for solar. They have to meet standards as far as where they put the panels, meet the setbacks, but those kinds of uses can be allowed by right if they meet the standards. What we're really addressing are the medium scale and utility scale, anything over one acre in size. And specifically utility scale, that's what we're really anticipating. Most of these developments are going to be very large scale for 10 acres and anywhere up to potentially 2,000 acres. And these, what we're going to be requiring with these uses is a conditional use permit. So these are not going to be allowed by right. You're going to have to go through a public hearing process to meet certain standards. So this is just a graphic, just showing kind of some of the uses that are associated with these. When you get into the panels, you need substations to transfer the power. Again, just showing that these are specifically anything over 10 acres for utility scale. So some of the major development standards that staff is recommending at this point, and we're still waiting to get feedback and direction from the planning commission on this and the cities. We're initially expecting these to be allowed for a term of up to 20 years for a conditional use permit, and it could be extended. So if a solar facility is approved, the maximum term it would be allowed under the CUP would be 20 years with any potential renewal that goes through a public hearing process. Maximum project area at this time, staff has proposed a maximum area of 2,000 acres and a maximum project extent of four square miles, that's roughly 2,500 acres. That's really looking at the overall area. We don't want any one project to take any more than that. We have other metrics in place that we're going to try to limit distance and buffers from cities, distance from other facilities, and I'll get into that in just a minute. So where these facilities usually need to be located is along existing transmission lines, primary transmission lines, if not immediately adjacent to, in close proximity. They don't necessarily need to be right adjacent to a power line. They could be in an area where, could be potentially a mile away, and they could install a new distribution line, a new overhead power line to transfer the power. But ideally, most of these facilities want to be close to existing transmission lines and substations, like Dave mentioned, the West Gardner substation. That's one that they know is a very popular location due to the proximity to a substation. One of the other standards we're recommending is at least a minimum separation of two miles from any other existing facility. So if one facility gets approved, the next closest a facility could be is two miles away. Some of the other major development standards that staff is recommending, the maximum percentage of a PV panel or a coverage area for any project would be 70%. So no more of a 70% of the parcel. So imagine a large parcel. They're not necessarily going to be allowed to install panels and equipment on the entire 100% of the site. They're going to be limited in 75%. So they're going to have to allow for buffers and accommodate any topographical or environmental issues on the site. One of the other recommendations is that these be located at least one mile from city limits. And that's something that we use as a baseline for when we're looking at future growth in the county. We don't want to impact any cities within a mile. That's generally considered a minimum area for future growth and development. Waivers could be possible if an applicant could demonstrate that there are no conflicts with a planned area for a city. What I think staff is looking at here, if a project were proposed within one mile and an applicant were to request a waiver, we would say that the city would have to weigh in on that, and it would have to show that there would be no conflict for the city. So that's one example of, and we're writing in findings, or an applicant would have to demonstrate findings for that, but that's one example of a metric we're looking at. Again, as I mentioned, also a minimum two miles from any other existing facility. This is a buffer map that staff has put together just to show the overall county. What is represented here in this bright green color is the one-mile, what is remaining from a one-mile buffer from all cities. So the fringe cities, all the cities adjacent to the unincorporated area, such as DeSoto, Gardner, Edgerton, Spring Hill, Olathe and Overland Park, we looked at a one-mile, minimum one-mile buffer around all cities. What would be remaining in that is the green area here. That's approximately 44,000 acres. That would be potentially eligible, any of these locations would be potentially eligible for a utility scale solar facility. This is just a, for reference, it's not really going to be adopted as part of regulation. We just wanted to give an idea for how this would impact cities and to start to get some feedback from the cities. So these do have a very large-scale impact. As I mentioned, the remaining area, after you consider the one-mile buffer, you'd be left with approximately 44,000 acres and in the unincorporated area. Just as a general reference, the McCamish Township, which is where the Next Era facility is looking to locate west of Gardner and Edgerton, that's, there would be approximately 14,400 acres that would be remaining outside of any buffers. So if a 2,000-acre facility were to be approved, that would compromise about 4.5% of the total unincorporated area in the county and 14% of the remaining McCamish Township, just for reference. This map is showing a potential, how a utility scale solar facility would be actually located in the county. These are kind of just theoretical parcel boundaries in a township. The map on the left is what would be likely the realistic type of utility scale project area. It's, this would be up to 2,000 acres as shown here graphically. All these parcels may not necessarily be contiguous. We anticipate these are not going to be all one large 2,000-acre connected intact project as indicated on the map on the right. That's not really how it's probably going to happen because most utility providers cannot assemble or get land leases from all the contiguous parcel owners. They're usually separated. And that's okay, provided they don't exceed a certain area. So what we're looking at is a maximum of 2,000 acres total. And any one parcel cannot be at least over a half a mile away from another participating parcel. So as example here on the map on the left, those green parcels, the parcels that are identified in a bright green, those would be over a half a mile away from the participating parcels, and they would not be allowed to be included within this project, just as an example. So we have metrics in place that we're going to try to limit these and keep them somewhat intact or connected. Other metrics specifically we're looking at are setbacks. We want to make sure that there's adequate setbacks for many existing dwellings that have to be at least 250 feet away. This graphic here on the right isn't really showing the proper dimensions, but what we're recommending is at least 250 feet away from any existing dwellings. The structures would need to be set back at least 50 feet from any project boundaries or official street lines. And any substations and battery energy facilities would have to be at least 150 feet away from properties. Those have more of an intense impact, and so we recognize they need to have greater setbacks. Just some other general standards, ground cover, you know, when these are, the solar panels, I'll show a couple of examples of some pictures, some sites that we've visited. They typically are located just on the native grasses or wherever the parcel is located. They don't generally require a full paved surface or gravel surface. They could be located on the grass. But any disturbed areas, we want to make sure that they're reseeded with prairie grasses. They also need to have security fencing around any of these pods or the equipment panels. They need to have fencing around them. But we want to make sure that there's area for wildlife corridors and areas that would protect any floodplains or natural features. So that's included in our regulations as well. Screening, these facilities would have to have screening from any residential areas or dwellings and any views of the equipment from the roads. We would, it doesn't necessarily have to be a 100% screen, but they do have to provide some general landscaping or birmingham or make sure you preserve existing vegetation to provide some type of a screen from the surrounding areas. So those are incorporated in our regulations as well. Locational criteria, one of the things that we really wanted to focus on were substations and battery energy facility storage. These are, again, the more intense components of a utility scale facility. We wanted to make sure these are sited away from any residential, so they'd be located in a non-residential area and away from any residential properties. They should be located within the interior of the project and minimize any impacts for view and noise. A major component of the regulations would be the decommissioning and reclamation process. So any, these facilities do, since they have such a large impact and an intense impact to the property, there need to be standards in place for decommissioning or the removal. At some point in their useful life, they're going to end whatever value that they have. The facility could either be removed, they could remove all the panels, or it could be renewed. If it is to be removed, or for whatever reason, the facility is no longer in effect, there need to be guarantees and surety in place to make sure that all of the equipment is removed and the site is restored to original condition. So we have, we'll have development requirements in place and agreements and surety and bonding requirements for any facility to make sure that those facilities can be removed and the site restored. I have a few pictures I want to go through, some examples. This is an aerial photo showing an existing solar facility in Sussex, Virginia. This just shows the, on the left-hand side of the screen here, it shows the facility and how it's represented as far as the location on the property. They do need to generally have access to the roads for maintenance. They'll have usually private maintenance roads within the site to access the equipment. But they, again, would have some type of buffer or setbacks around it. And they, in this case, I don't know if this would actually meet what we're recommending here in Johnson County, but we want to keep these obviously located as far away from cities as possible. So this may be not the best example to show is where, how far away they should be from a developed area, but this just shows you for graphic, for representation, how it's situated on the land. County staff went to meet with the City of Independence, Missouri, to visit an existing solar facility. This is in the city of Independence, it's right in the middle of the city. It's a former park site, and I believe this was about a 70-acre site. And we walked around with the utility provider and city staff just to get a feel for this project, how it was working and the impacts of the surrounding area. Generally, from what we understand, this particular facility is running fairly well. It's actually surrounded by residential areas. And again, it was a former park. This is kind of a repurposed use of the site. But from what we understand, it's generally low impact and minimum issues with the surrounding area. These, this is an example of, these are fixed panels. So these panels do not change. Some of the panels can be adjusted where they can be rotated to move with the direction of the sun. These are fixed panels at a 45-degree angle. They're approximately 12 feet in height. They could go anywhere up to 15 feet. But as I mentioned, these are located on the turf. They're generally, they, the only areas that they pave or would provide gravel would be for access for maintenance equipment, but generally, they're located right on the grass. And they, in this example, this site, the developer was telling us they masqueraded the entire site. They planted native vegetation, and it was established within a year. They also provided landscaping around the site that, unfortunately, I don't have good pictures of that, but they did have good screening around the site. One of the features that all solar facilities have to have are inverters. This is, this is an example of one here that would be to transfer the power. So once the solar power is collected from the panels, it needs to be distributed to the grid, and these inverters are one common feature. That's probably the most intense impact for most of these. They do have, sound like a generator, you can hear the power when we're up close to it, you could hear it, but generally, it didn't seem to have too much of an impact for the surrounding area. Those are just, that's just kind of a quick run-through of the draft regulations and some photos. I wanted to leave time for any questions and try to answer questions and provide any feedback from our process and hope to gather any impact or feedback from the commissioners here. I will note, as I mentioned, our next steps, we're hoping to have two study sessions within the next month, and we welcome any comments from the cities, questions. We'll be happy to relay these. And I'll look to Dave maybe to help remind, we're going to, we're going to send out a memo too to all the cities with additional information and some of the draft, a summary of these regulations, and we welcome any questions or comments. So that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions? Commissioner Cooper.
I have a bunch. So have you intended to acquire the land?
Yeah, these will be, so the way, I didn't explain this very well in my presentation. The way most of these facilities are developed, they will remain in private property ownership, and the utility providers obtain land leases. These are long-term leases usually with a landowner. So they'll get maybe a 25- to 50-year land lease. And so the property will remain in ownership, be private property ownership, but an applicant, in this case, a utility provider, will have to obtain a conditional use permit with the owner's consent and be subject to those standards. But they will remain, all the properties will remain in private ownership. And although there is a conditional use permit for a solar facility, the landowners will still have the right to use the land for grazing or pasture or potentially even still some agricultural use. They may only devote maybe half of their site to the utility facility, the solar facility, but they'll reserve the right to use the rest of their land for how they're using.
I'm curious, you mentioned the large-scale impact, and there are a couple of locations mentioned on which slide number it was, but this slide with the one-mile buffer, where would those locations be in regard to the green area?
They would have to be, any new solar facility would have to be within the green area, under our draft or proposed regulations. There is no official application submitted at this time. So although we know Next Era is looking at a facility in the county, there has been no application yet submitted. If and when it is submitted, that project area would have to be in the, somewhere in these bright green area, it would have to be at least one mile from city limits, couldn't be any closer than two miles from another facility, which we're not aware of any existing facilities in the county for utility scale. But, so there's no application yet at this time, but what we're envisioning, from what we've heard from Next Era, their project, I believe, is approximately two miles from, just for reference, I think it's two miles from the current, two miles or three, three miles, two miles from the current city limits of Gardner's. Just so if you just go west in the McCamish Township, I believe it's west of Edgerton Road. That is where this first facility we anticipate being, but there's no application yet submitted. So we don't know exactly where, but it'd have to be in that. So we don't know exactly where, but it'd have to be in that, in one of those green areas. They're looking for an area which we understand to be close to 2,000 acres, maybe, maybe 2,500 acres is what they're proposing. What staff, what county staff is currently recommending at this time would be a maximum of 2,000 acres for any one facility. But again, there's, it's kind of hard, we're trying to get that information from NextEra. They've been a little reluctant because I don't know if they've quite identified the exact area. The other thing to mention too, as Dave mentioned, there's a, this project we anticipate will straddle the county line. Part of the project we anticipate will be located in Douglas County. And Douglas County is currently going through the same process right now with reviewing a draft regulation in their county as well. Because I think NextEra will cross over into Douglas County as well.
And I'm going to clarify something too in regard to the one-mile. My understanding from discussions that we've had where county staff has been on conference calls or online with us on Zoom calls, is that that one-mile buffer would flux with the city limits. So if our city limits push out, that one-mile keeps pushing out as the city pushes out. So just be aware of that, that this is a one-mile reference for where we are today. But if we annex in further lands, this buffer area would continue to progress outward from the new city limits that would be established through annexations.
That's correct.
And it anticipates that we're going to annex before they build, because once they build...
Right, correct.
For any one facility, so that's correct, as Dave mentioned. These regulations will apply to any facility as, at the time of application. So if in 10 years from now, an application comes in, these city limits obviously will change. So this map is definitely not static. This is going to be just for our reference. An applicant will have to follow any current city boundaries for whatever that regulation is at that time.
You mentioned the, there's a lease for the purposes of these solar panels and restoration of lands once those leases are expired?
Yet, yes, there would be required. So if a, if the lease expires, it would have to be renewed. At that point, you know, a landowner would have to renew that. But from the jurisdiction standpoint, from the county standpoint, to meet our regulations, if a facility were for whatever reason to go out of commission or to not be in use, the owner would be responsible, we would require a bond. They'll have to, the applicant will have to secure a bond with the county. So if it, for whatever reason, is no longer in use, they would have to reclaim the site. They'd have to decommission the facility, remove all the equipment and restore the site.
The owner being the landowner?
The developer. The surety and the bonds would be from the utility provider. So as an example, NextEra, they would work with the landowner to get the lease, but NextEra, the utility provider or whoever the owner of the facility is at the time, would be responsible for decommissioning the site. And our bonds would be in effect, would cover the utility provider.
And the bonds would be established at this, at the present date, based on the allocation cost?
Correct. So we would be taking an estimate based on the appraisal of the cost of equipment now and for removal of the equipment at present value. So it would... I may not want to speak out of turn, I may be, I need my other staff here to help, that have helped us with these regulations. That may, our regulations may address the cost that would reflect the time of development. But the bond, that's something that, the bond amount will have to be determined based on a third-party review. So as we're recommending for this facility, when they submit an application, we're going to get an independent third-party review for the equipment and the cost of decommissioning. I don't know the specifics as it's drafted as to what the value is assigned, if it's a time of proposal or a time of installation or the estimated value at the end of the lease. That's something I have to check on.
Impact studies, how long have, I know there have been some solar facilities built across the country, but how long have they been in place and what are the real impact studies and how long are they for at this point?
Impact study, like an environmental impact study? I do not know the specifics of that. We, that'd be a good question for our consultant. That's something that we do, we will require in our draft regulations, we will require an environmental impact assessment. I don't know the details of that as it's currently drafted. But that is something that's going to be required. In addition to the environmental impact, these facilities require stormwater management reports and any necessary studies, traffic studies. So there's a lot of information that goes into that, but I don't know all the specifics of that environmental impact.
And the other question I have, I noticed in the photograph of the facility in Independence, you mentioned that they planted prairie grasses and plants for pollinators and all to put them to mow, so...
That's an option that can have pollinator plants, but these were native grasses that, in this case, they were maintaining in that example in Independence. For our draft regulations, I don't think we have determined yet the details for how we want the sites to be maintained. They can be, they will need to be planted. They will need to be planted with native grasses. As to whether or not they're mowed or grazed, allow, you know, whatever that...
The impact on the environment?
Certainly, yeah, and that's a detail that will probably need to be reviewed on a case-by-case basis. The CUP has a lot of these standards, but as far as the native grasses and how it looks, that's something that, yeah, again, I don't know how any one facility in the county will be developed, but that's a good, good question, that's something that we'd have to look at. What we're recommending...
Pollinators, why the thousands of trees at this point because of environmental changes? But so if you're planting for pollinators, does it involve any path woods?
So the way this Independence site is, they mowed it. The way our county site will be, I believe according to our draft regulations, they do have to be native grasses and they do have to include pollinators. I think that's the way our draft regulations are currently worded. Again, this is draft, hasn't been adopted...
You can include pollinators if they're mowed, they're useless.
So our sites may not be mowed. I mean, that's potentially a requirement. They may, we may have a requirement that they're not allowed to be mowed. I, yeah. It's certainly a good case-by-case basis, that's, yeah, something we have to look at. Sure.
Commissioner Gineman?
Yeah, you mentioned if a solar facility went in, that there'd be like a two-mile buffer from another potential solar facility. Can you explain why that number was picked or is it arbitrary or other jurisdictions?
No, that's a good question. The two-mile buffer, similar to the one-mile buffer, is something we looked at and what made sense from a, just an impact standpoint. We thought two miles was a, we felt if there's one facility up to potentially 2,000 acres, to minimize the impact on the unincorporated area, they would have to be separated at least two miles just to limit that potential impact to the unincorporated area. We already know that if any one facility, if it were up to 2,000 acres, it could be potentially 4.5% of the unincorporated area. That, you start losing that area of land fast if they, you just only had, let's say, a one-mile buffer or a one-mile setback from another facility. Two miles would limit the proliferation of that one use that much more. So the two miles was just a standard based on the overall size and impact and because it's such a geographical distribution, two miles was determined to be an appropriate buffer from another facility. But it's, there's no mathematical formula or says, you know, this is such a unique use. We've never seen anything this large of scale in the county or probably in a lot of local jurisdictions. So the thought being one, two miles was just that much more of a restriction to limit the, these facilities.
Yes, I had just a few questions. You know, on the, on the obtaining of leases to use for these types of facilities, are they going to be, will eminent domain be enforced? Or will people be forced into leasing these areas? Or, and if they're not, is that what can result in some of the non-contiguous situations? What impact, I guess what I'm asking is, A, will landowners be forced and B, what happens if they don't comply?
Good question, absolutely not. These, these are going to be private facilities. So these will be on private land, will not have anything to do with the county or public ownership or public rights. A private utility provider may have to go in and get right-of-way or easements, but they have to do that with the consent and approval of a landowner. The county does not have any plans to use eminent domain for any part of these developments. So this would be strictly a private development. They have to go in voluntarily, get a lease with a participating or an individual wants to participate. We, the local jurisdictions would not participate at all in terms of acquisition of land or require condemnation of land for these facilities.
So the interconnection of all these sites is going to be probably a pretty complex and vast array of easements?
I think this particular provider has been working on this project for a year already and we've just now been starting to get some details from them about the specifics of the location and how they're working. Yes, it takes, it's a very complex process for getting a facility that's a utility scale that can actually transfer power to the grid, requires a lot of assembly of land or at least coordination with property owners to acquire leases that can make it work. And it's, yeah, we're still trying to get our hands wrapped around this.
Just a couple more questions. How efficient is this in the use of the land? Is this a really efficient use of square footage of land? Granted, there's a chunk of land out there on the western side of Johnson County that's open. It's primarily agricultural today. Is this going to be an efficient use of that square footage of land?
You know, it's hard to say if it's truly efficient in comparing it to, say, agricultural use. We will rely on the property owner to dictate what is in the best interest of their land in, in doses, you know, it's got to be manageable. We have heard from, we've been getting some, we had one public meeting where we started to get some input. It was not a public hearing, but we, we got property owners who attended. Some all in favor of it, some who have major concerns about this. Most of the people who are in support of it, who are mostly agricultural landowners, believe that this would be an efficient use of land for areas that they would devote to using. From what we're hearing, it could be more productive than agricultural uses in some areas. So from what we hear for some property owners, it can be an efficient use of land. But it, again, it probably just depends on the, any one site, we have to look at that. And so when an application does come in the county, it's going to be a public hearing. We'd have to look at those impacts on any one site to see what is appropriate. Maybe some aspects of one application doesn't make sense and they may need to revise the application.
Could they be placed in areas where maybe environmental toxins have been or places that other uses of land cannot be used? And what I'm kind of thinking about is the old sunflower ammunition dump.
Yeah.
Right in the middle of that green, it's basically where there's no roads.
No, that's a perfect...
That would be an excellent use of that kind of acreage.
Absolutely, no, that's a perfect use of land. We, staff recommended the same thing to the applicant when we first met with them way back in January of this year. We asked, what about the sunflower site near DeSoto? Absolutely, they could use that land for this use if all the conditions were right. There may be other reclamation and cleanup issues going on on that particular site that may get not quite yet conducive for this use. But absolutely, they could be developed on a site like that if everything was ready. And from what we understand, that may be a viable use at some point in that property, but at this time, it's not yet ready.
And is this going to have battery backing? Is this going to have where it can be used at night? You know, and through the times when there's not enough sunlight, is, will there be energy? I guess I'm saying, will there be enough storage facility to really make this a positive gain?
Yes, from what we understand, the trend now for all these new facilities is they have, almost all new solar, utility scale solar facilities have been incorporating battery storage. That helps to, I think, retain some of that energy that is collected on the panels. And if it's not being transferred to the grid, it could be stored on battery storage on-site. Not every site is suitable or conducive for battery storage. We would anticipate that a new application here in the county would have battery storage. And as to how that's used or how much of the site could be used for battery storage, that's something we're still looking at. But we anticipate, as most of these new facilities go, they will have battery storage on-site.
You know, I believe overall, solar is a good alternative for some uses, particularly with the rapidly increasing demand on the grid. As our society transitions through electric vehicles, one of the things I don't think the country have thought about is the demand that's going to put on the existing grid. You know, so stuff like this and then in the summertime when we get a big use of energy, like in July and August, the kind of heat we've had, that's also in the prime season for the direct rays of the sun. And I see that as good. The last question I had is, I, my wife and I are from central Iowa originally and our travels back up to the west of Des Moines and then you get over about 20 miles past Brunel going east on I-80, you'll see huge, huge wind farms. And initially, and my concern is, initially, people up there in Iowa thought that was going to be a great thing and everybody that leased out their land for a windmill, the vast majority of them didn't know what they didn't know at the time and have come to regret, you know, the decisions they've made. And, you know, what, you know, what things are being done to educate the public to make sure that if some of these people lease out their land, that they won't be bit by things that, you know, not knowing what they don't know?
That's a good question. You know, at this time, we have not reached out for any public input specifically on the long-term impacts. But we have been working with a consultant who is very familiar with these facilities and they've had about 10 years of experience working in solar. I would say this is still a relatively new technology for utility scale solar. So it's a good, it's a good question as to the long-term impacts and benefits. From what we understand, as far as renewable energy goes, solar is the cleanest form of the new renewable energy, much more so than wind power, just because of the other potential impacts with wind. There's a lot of other negative impacts of those, that type of renewable energy. But long-term, it's still not really known. I don't know if there's been much education, at least not from the county. So it's a good, it's a good question, something I guess we'll be looking from our consultant. And I can tell you, coming up in our study sessions in September, our consultant will be available on this virtual call to help answer those questions. So that's a, that's a good one, I'll take note of that.
Thank you for answering my questions, that's all.
I'll do something I don't normally do and I'll go next. I'm going to take a little different thing on this. I appreciate you taking the time and coming and talking to us. Considering this is unincorporated, this commission or does the city in particular have any direct say over this? So I'm not going to question you about the solar facility in direct. I will say, representing the city of Gardner on the planning commission, the only thing I'd ask that the county commission look at is the rate of expansion that's going on. We have a lot of rural south of Gardner that's quickly turning into warehouses from our neighbor. We have the Grata development that quickly annexed quite a bit. Gardner does have a growth plan in the direction, general direction of this. So I just, I'd like them to think about the one-mile buffer and if that's actually going to be enough for the cities that are expanding at a pretty good rate. So from my perspective, that's all I have.
Yeah, it's a good comment. We actually heard from our planning commissioners, at least two of the county planning commissioners were specifically concerned with that, impacts of the cities. And that's why they wanted to hear the impact, input from the cities to see how does this line up with their future growth areas? And I think, we've been talking with Dave and the planning staff here in Gardner, we were asking about that, future growth areas. I think one of the things that we're going to try to do is coordinate with each of the cities to look at their future growth areas and see, this one-mile buffer as it's currently drafted may change. We're hearing some of the commissioners say, maybe it should be two miles. Some saying, one mile seems like that's a, that's a really large area. Well, that definitely you need to accommodate for future growth. So I think everybody's pretty well agreeable to the one-mile. But then we've heard from others saying, maybe it should be more. So we need to probably visit with each of the cities to get their direct impact and how does this one-mile buffer jive with the future city growth areas or the planned areas, future growth areas in the city? So we noted that, that's a good point.
Thank you. And Mr. Chairman, I'll also suggest that, or not suggest, but I'll make a comment, that staff has been having conversations with the county about the one-mile. I've had conversations with other staff here internally and we do have, we have some concerns about the one-mile, especially given our western potential for growth and what's going on there, as well as not just the western growth and the rate. And you did mention that that rate could be pretty significant, it could happen fairly quickly. We are a little bit concerned about that, but also because we do have growth plans in place. And so it's, it's one of those... And so it's, it's one of those interesting aspects, because I think what the county is seeking is some kind of uniform policy that can work for everybody. Yet, on one hand, the Gardner, Edgerton areas are a very different kind of situation than the other cities that are out there. This is kind of out on our front doorstep, so we want to be very careful with all of that. I think the other concern that we have is how the waiver works in that distance, whatever it is. So we're, we're going to probably have some additional discussions there internally too, so good comment on that.
Thank you, Dave.
Chairman, I'll just second you regarding the conversation comment about the, the buffering. And, and also, I was happy to read in the packet and also happy to hear that there is consideration being taken regarding the decommissioning of the facilities. So I think that's very important and critical, and I look forward to joining the Zoom session, work session you guys have coming up in September.
Sure, yeah, thanks. And I'll, we'll get that information out to Dave and the planning staff here, they can forward that to all the commissioners. And yeah, absolutely. I know the commissioners, county planning commissioners are looking forward to that input from the city.
Fabulous, thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Hamm, did you have anything?
No, I think all of my fellow commercial commissioners have covered everything.
Well, thank you. If anybody does have any follow-up, let me know.
Thank you, I appreciate the input.
Sorry, Dave? No, you're good. We, we will keep you informed as Sean provides us information on dates and things, and things are coming up. We'll try to keep you as informed as possible. I have made overtures to the county also for getting word out into the community as they move further. Citizens, whether they live in the city limits or they're out in the county, the county is a representative government of them. So when they're thinking about these conditions and everything in light of Gardner, I think it's important that the citizens are aware when these public hearings are and what's going on. And we offered the opportunity, and I need to talk to our public information officer about getting that word out as we get it. So we're trying to be an information conduit. The county has been proactive with us as a city in reaching out to the cities of Johnson County. They were on a call with all the planning directors here, what, two weeks ago or so? And as we've been having this discussion and as their process has been evolving, they've kept us pretty well informed. So I want to thank the county for doing that. I know sometimes different jurisdictions don't work together very well. Fortunately, with Jay and Sean and myself, there's a history of working together on other projects and in other communities. And so it's very easy for us to pick up the phone and go, hey, what's going on here?
Yeah.
Usually, we're on top of each other pretty good there, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. All right, we have discussion item number two, off-site advertising signage.
Yeah, I'm going to be fairly quick with this. There's no action necessary for tonight or anything. I want to make you aware of a couple of things here. As you know, anytime we look at land development code amendments and that, those can be initiated by staff or the planning commission or the governing body. In this particular case, the governing body is initiating a look at the land development code in regard to off-site advertising signs or billboards, as they're commonly referred to. So in that effort, the, there was a sign provider and a landowner who approached the city with some proposals as to how we might look at doing billboards, particularly along I-35 as a corridor here in Gardner. And they brought that request up in front of this, the governing body, and the governing body asked staff to start looking at that. Our current land development regulations do not allow for off-site advertising or billboards. I cited the code there where it indicates that any sign with a business message shall be located on the site of the business activities. Right there is where we say, yeah, you can't have off-site advertising. The difficult part of this is not only the restrictive side, which means there is none allowed anywhere in the city. The second part of it is, is there have been Supreme Court cases not too long ago, having to do with signage, sign content, message in particular. And no longer are we allowed to regulate signs based on their message, okay, or their message content. Be very careful about that. There's some exceptions that we always have this fine balancing act. But at the end of the day, the overall rule of thumb is you cannot regulate signage based on that content or message per se. With that in mind, this segment of the code becomes kind of a double jeopardy thing. If you're an advocate for billboards, it prevents them from happening, the second part is, is based on message, and it clearly says that. So we need to look at it one way or the other. The question that'll be before you as a planning commission and before the governing body is, I will be drafting some regulation amendments to the LDC here coming up, probably in the next 30 days or so. You will have to determine if you value those or if you still value the idea that we do not allow billboards at all, okay? So that is what's before you as a planning commission, is to try to determine, are we achieving an effective balance? Are we going far enough? Do we not go far enough? Are we going too far currently? So while we do have kind of a proposal in front of us that I'm using, and I am discussing, actually, Mr. Weir is here tonight. He's been in meetings with me, and they, they brought some proposals forward. I did not give you those proposals at this time because I didn't want you to be inherently looking at that. I wanted to make sure that you take your values forward in this and look at everything else from the standpoint of what staff is starting to recommend. So your reactions to these things are not going to hurt me, they're not going to bother me. It's just a matter, as, as I'm talking with the individuals that have brought this forward and also trying to achieve what the governing body has said, let's look at the amendment, see what we can find for allowing off-site advertising. I wanted to make sure that you're getting what I, what my views are at this point, as we're drafting, as we're evolving. I will tell you that I've been in contact with legal advisement on this too a little bit. And I'm also still reaching out to the state. KDOT has a program in place in regard to billboards along state corridors, state highway corridors in the interstates. So there is a program there. I gave you a link to it in the packet. So what I hope you will do over the next month or so is start looking at our sign regulations, which are very straightforward, very much based in the type of signs that are out there. So in general, it's a very clear, easy read, quite frankly, for most sign ordinances that are much more complicated. But then also go ahead to that link that I've given you for KDOT also. Because anything we do along I-35, as is always the case, the state kind of sets the minimum standards. We can't, we can be more restrictive, but we can't be less restrictive than what they're already showing. So you'll want to get a familiarity with that. If you're truly interested in getting into the actual Highway Beautification Act that was passed, all the details of the state, I'll be glad to send you that link. You can have at it. I hope you have a good reading. Because I'm relying on the information that goes out to the users, and I'm also contacting staff directly and allowing for their guidance to, to help me inform this. So be aware of that. In light of that, what I did put together for you in your staff report was simply some draft standards that would be applicable to signs as a principal use of property. So one of the things that I'm trying to do here is balance that idea that I cannot regulate by message content anymore. And how do we stick to the physical characteristics of a sign or a use of property? So one of the things is to look at signs as accessory uses, and that's usually the case when they're on site with a business. They would be an accessory use. They're something that's part of the principal use. So take the Taco Bell KFC. The principal use is retailer, restaurant, right? Signage is an accessory use associated with that principal use, okay? And in many cases, that's what our sign ordinance is really intending to do, is to look at signs as accessory uses to the actual use that's there. With billboards or off-site advertising, the tactic that I'm trying to look at because of the way our code is written, is what happens when a billboard is placed on a site as a principal use of that property, okay? Not as an accessory, because again, it's not advertising a principal use, okay? If you have an agricultural land, you're not going to have a sign going, hey, we're producing hay here. They might, somebody might do that, right? But at the end of the day, that would be the principal use type. In most cases, the messages are not tied to the actual use of that property. So I'm trying to work my way through that. The state has some language, and it's language that I've been bouncing off legal, and now have to work a little bit with the state on, where they have some limitations. You cannot just zone property for the purpose of the sign itself. So I've got to talk to them a little bit about that. I've talked to the folks, Mr. Weir and Matt, a little bit about that quandary that we're in. But right now, the framework that I'm trying to do is work around that and looking at what would be suitable parcel sizes, what would be good separation distance, and what are good physical sizes of signs from a height and dimension standpoint. Mr. Weir has given us some guidance, which is nice, and it's actually, in the last email that last week, gave me a reference to an individual in regard to some of our lighting standards that we have and what we may do with LEDs and different things there. So I'm going to hopefully be reaching out to that individual also to look at this. But many of the things I've been relying on here, some are from the people that have brought this proposal forward, especially when you look at some of the construction and maintenance standards and things like that that are there. Those were voluntarily brought forward. Those would be things that, yes, staff would think of, but these are pretty logical kinds of elements. We want to make sure that whatever's put out there stays in good standing, okay? That it's constructed well, permitted the correct way, inspected the right way, and then periodically revisited. Because there's nothing worse than a sign that gets a few years old, it becomes dilapidated, and you're driving by it, the message is hanging off, wind is blowing it apart, you've got wood pieces all over the place. So that's part of those construction maintenance standards and why we want to be doing that. Lighting is another big issue with LED and electronic messaging boards. That is kind of the wave, of a future way of looking at these signs, because obviously, there's new, or I'd say there's opportunity to have many more messages in a day's time on that one board versus having the static message. That's, that's important for the advertisers, but it's also important that we're not creating any kind of distraction for driving, that we're not creating that glare, nighttime kinds of elements. If any of you have ever been up I-35 on your way to Des Moines, actually coming back from Des Moines in the middle of the night, there's a nice casino that you can, several miles away from it, looks like War of the Worlds because of the bright flashy light. We don't necessarily want that, and neither do most of the sign providers. But they're being pretty conscientious about these things nowadays too, because it is a traffic safety issue. At the end of the day, nobody wants to be held liable for that. At the same hand, we are trying to also look at this as types of signs. One of the things, because, and this is why it's important, when you look at your sign regulations over the next 30 days, you'll note you have things like monument signs, and you have things that are pole signs of different types. And so when we think about these types of signs, they're typical monuments, well, they're actually typically pole signs at the end of the day. Sometimes they are monument signs. And what we will hold them to are some of the standards that we have for those types of signs as well. And that's kind of what I've cited in the draft elements too. So what I would tell you is, go ahead and look at these. If you have some initial reaction tonight, I'm glad to hear that. If you have some questions about this. But this is going to evolve some more over the next 30 days as we balance legal requirements, the state requirements, what we're trying to accomplish and hopefully bring forward a proposal that is somewhere in that in-between area that says, yeah, we're okay with this, but we don't want a proliferation of billboards along I-35 every 500 feet, which I think is the state standard. I think it's 500 or 600 feet, whatever that is. So that's where we're trying to find that balance point at this point in time. But also, you should know that when I bring that draft forward to you, and as it's heard in a public hearing standpoint, one of your guiding factors is, is does this reflect the values of the community and the planning commission? It'll still go forward to the governing body with your recommendation, one way or another. But because they initiated it and they've asked for it, so, but it does have to go through the public hearing process here with the courses. With that, I'd be glad to try to answer some questions with the understanding that I'm working on evolving some of this stuff. So if you get to a specific number, I might say, well, do you have a suggestion? Go larger, or do you want to go smaller? And we can kind of do that. So just be aware of that. Because right now, I've started these numbers based on what I've found so far, but they still may change, so.
Anyone have any comments or questions?
I just know that I want to keep with Gardner as a family community. And I just don't want to bring in anything that looks like when you're driving down 70, you know, and you've got, you know, a sign and it's, you know, continuation from the sign that you just saw before, and it's just, you know, telling a story going down the highway. I don't want that. I also don't want anything that polarizes our community either. So that's my big thing. I will look over this, but that is, that is my big concern. I want to make sure that we stay keeping in the tradition that we've established here in Gardner. So that's just my, my two cents.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anything on this site, Commissioner?
Yeah, you mentioned that the state minimum is 500 to 600?
Yeah, I'd have to look. I don't have it memorized, unfortunately. But the state requirements on I-35 as well as some of the other designated state corridors, when you go to that brochure, you'll see a map that identifies the various corridors. But within that, they have separation distance minimums. So they have to be a certain distance to meet that state requirement. We could say that we want it separated more than that. So if the state minimum is 500 feet, we could come back and say, no, you know what? 1,000 feet. That's, that's our value. And that would be okay, but we can't go to 300 feet. We can't drop below the.
Oh, that's a good question. Is how deep, deep are we talking about that Gardner actually has any say over?
I don't know the total along there. The frontage, we're, we're talking, because it's diagonal, which was in north, south, or east, west, I can tell you right off. I would tell you, we probably have, it's around probably five miles of exposure because of diagonal. Now, when you think about it, 199th Street is about the furthest south we go to just north of 175th Street, which is usually what, two miles, three miles would be that? And if we're diagonal, probably a little more distance, you know? So maybe not five, maybe less than five miles. Um, 500, 5,268.
Five, two, eight, zero.
Yeah, five, two, eight, zero. I know how many square feet in an acre.
So we've got, we have, let's say we have five miles. And then it'd be potentially, it could be.
The, it'd be, let's see, 26,000 linear feet.
But I'm just thinking in terms of, I mean, there.
And so if you did every 500.
That's a lot, isn't it?
It could be a lot. So the, we're going to be looking at that. And the other balance point to have to be careful with is how this is placed into action so that it doesn't look like you're arbitrarily favoring one property over another property, you know, that's an issue too. So separation distances, physical distances are going to be important as we look at that. And I'll try to, I'll try to remember to get an actual distance measurement, because it's not that hard on AIMS for me to do that. So we can, we can get the frontages, and that'll give us an idea of what those separation distances will do. Um, I believe on one side, we're on one side on a good portion of it. Generally, the west side, what I'll call north, we use northwest side. Pretty much most of that is in Gardner. On the east side, we are, we have a few areas where we have area on the east side. And I'll have to ask Sean, I'll have to ask Sean, if he's still here, what the county's rules are on billboards on the county side, because I know that question will come up also, because you go, well, if it's not annexed in the city already, then what happens? That's a good line of questioning. Now I know I have another question to ask Sean at the county. Don't hold me to the, the whole footage and frontage thing, so.
Commissioner McNear?
Yeah.
Yeah, Dave, I have a couple of questions. What are you kind of thinking, just general guidelines? What you'd like to see as far as limitation of numbers? And if I understood you correctly, we can't really, it's a Commissioner Hamm's issue or a question was, we can't be limiting on what's actually in the content of those. So what, what, what would you encourage us to be thinking about over the next 30 minutes?
I think, I think part of this is, as you're driving along highway corridors, quite frankly, I think the imagery that Commissioner Hamm brought up, that idea of what you don't like and what you do like, is you travel around and you're normal working here, take a look at it. Just watch what you're seeing along highways, and if there are segments of roadways where you're sitting there going, wow, that's just too much, this, we shouldn't be doing this. Like, in some cases, you'll see double stack signs. You might see the triangular signs where they, you know, they come out. All those different physical elements that are out there, don't focus on the wording. and the messaging, but look at the structures, look at what you're witnessing along the roadway. And if there are things that are concerning you, I think it's important to have those in your mind. Now, the secondary part of that is, that's you experiencing it. Then there's the second part, which is what do you believe the values of the community are here? So that's the other second.
I guess the other thing is, are we going to be able to provide guidance or input as far as the types? Earlier you had mentioned the LED type signs. Those change every few seconds, I think they call it impressions, down, going down the highway. And those can be very, as a driver, those can be very distracting, particularly at night.
Right. And there are some.
My concern would be from a safety perspective.
Right. And there are some general standards that when we get into that, I think Mr. Winger agreed, there are some general standards that are industry standards and also have been accepted by the state already as minimums. And we may be just reflecting some of those. And some of that has to do with how long a message has to stay on and also the transition time between messages. So those elements are pretty well predicated in some of the state regulations. So we're going to probably fall in line with those, because that's the closest definitive source we've got, short of adopting a standard that then we always have to go out and try to measure and do on our own. If we are consistent with the state and things like that, we got another set of regulatory eyes looking at the same exact thing we're looking at, which is a good thing. So I, I think the hard part here is going to be balancing, because the policy has been what it is, which has been no off-site advertising, this is a, this is a policy change. And so it's a little bit different direction. I think that's why the public hearing may be important. I, I don't know how people will react to this. I think there'll also be, you know, as you mentioned, Commissioner Hamm, that idea of, hey, there's some values here and we're going to have to tell people in some instances, we can't regulate that. Unfortunately, I, I understand the I-70 Missouri corridor. That's a, that's a corridor that I don't think many people would sit there and say, this is what we want.
Yeah.
So, but then again, I want to be careful about how much we're regulating and what we're doing in that sense. So I think we want to be in a pretty safe place with most of this.
Anything else? Okay.
That's all I have. I will, that's all for the regular agenda. I do want to mention one thing. Commissioner Hamm is serving on a advisory group for the airport business and economics study, not as an official representative of the planning commission, but as a citizen. I don't know how many know your, I don't know if you shared your Navy experience in that, but she's, she's got some air traffic control experience and different things that lend very well to the group. They had their first meeting last week.
Last month, last Tuesday.
Yeah. And so there is a study going on for the business economic aspects of the airport out there. And I'm talking about the Gardner Airport, not New Century, so just, just be aware of that. I don't know, Maya, if you wanted to add anything or not, but.
It was just a preliminary meeting, just looking at how we want to utilize the airport in the community and what direction we're, we're looking at taking that. I'm really excited about it and I, I hope that a lot of information comes out about that and gets us up and running. There's, there's a lot of irons in the fire going forward with that, but I'm really excited about the, the future of, of our airport.
Okay. With nothing further, except a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Motion by Commissioner McNear, second by Commissioner Dunham to adjourn. Will the service say aye?
Aye.
Any against? Want to give?
Is she against adjournment or is she?
The motion to adjourn passes.